All right. Good evening. I'm Kelly Madden and as the Chair of the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission, I am calling this Monday, February 6th, 2023 meeting to order. The time is 5:30 PM and this begins our quarterly commission meeting. And I already know who is here and who is not here because of the smart use of technology. So Commissioner Lekti, welcome. Commissioner Hording Jones, welcome. Commissioner Ellingson, welcome. We have not heard from Commissioner Schmidling yet and I do not think that Commissioner Stemmich will be here this evening because she said she was going to try, but she's like in the car driving somewhere and I don't think that's such a great idea. So I don't think she will be here this evening. Also joining us this evening are Tanya Salzman, the Senior Planner for Deschutes County.
Can I make just a quick interruption? I just received an email from Chris Hording Jones saying she can't hear anyone. Is that still the case? This audio was just turned on. Can we get some sort of?
I can hear.
You can hear?
Thank you. Commissioner Hording Jones, can you hear us?
I can now.
Okay, good. It's muted until the last second.
I am so grateful that that worked out because I missed hearing your voice. All right, are we ready to proceed? So the first thing that I would like to do, oh, also joining us this evening will be the fabulous Peter Gatawski, the Community Development Director of Deschutes County. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from August 1st, 2022, November 7th, 2022, and January 9th, 2023. And I will begin with the August minutes. So hmm, at this time, I would like to see if there is anybody that would like to, I completely forgot what I was supposed to say.
Motion?
A motion to...
The minutes?
To approve the minutes. Thank you very much. My mind just went blank. Is there anybody that has any questions before we take a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, August 1st, 2022? I'm sorry, my brain just went dead. Any comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion now to approve the minutes. Is there anyone that would like to start that?
I wasn't there. This is Sharon, so I don't feel like I can...
Okay.
...make a motion, but I can't, I shouldn't vote on it because I wasn't at the meeting.
All right. Commissioner Ellingson?
Could you repeat which minutes these are, please?
August 1st.
August 1st, 2022. And if you all didn't have a chance to review those, we can wait till the next time as well.
Kelly, do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, approved. Okay. The next one is the minutes from Monday, November 7th, 2022. And those of you that were there can remember that was a time that was very difficult to hear. And if you did see the minutes, a lot of it on the second page says the audio went out and no information was received. The audio went out and no information was captured. So I did look at those minutes myself and at this time, does anybody have any comments or concerns about the meeting minutes from November 7th? And if not, I would approve a motion or I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, November 7th. Is there anyone that would like to do that?
I make a motion, Kelly, to accept the minutes as presented again.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I second.
All right, thank you very much. The final set of minutes are from Monday, January 9th, 2023. And they were the minutes from the last meeting that we had. Today is Monday, February 6th. So those minutes, if you all had a chance to look at those, and I did, and I didn't have comments on that myself, but at this time, I would like to see if anybody has any questions or concerns about the minutes from Monday, January 9th. And if not, at this moment, I will entertain someone to start a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little technical difficulty here, but it shows me as being there via Zoom and I think I was there in person.
That is such a great, that's true. That's a good, we'll make that change, Commissioner Ellingson, and thank you for pointing that out to us. Are there any other changes that need to be made? All right, at this moment, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, January 9th, 2023.
Kelly, this is Sharon. I knew that we accept the minutes with the changes. Join Dan was at the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Lekti. Is there a second?
I second.
Woo, thank you. That was like going to dentist, y'all. Thank you very much. All right. Going back to the agenda.
No.
Can you hear me? All right, going back to the agenda, oh, it's time for the public comment. And I don't know if we have any members from the public joining us this evening. No members in public? Scanning the room. Any of you public? No public in the room. All right, so moving on to agenda number four. These are the action items and there are three. And I will turn it over at this point to Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner from Deschutes County.
Thank you, Chair Madden. Yep, for the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner. Nice to see everyone tonight. So the first action item is our usual check-in with the Bend and Redmond HLCs. Bend, we'll start with them. They just, they don't have anything big going on. They just continue to get individual applications in for review. They did not provide any more specifics than that, but that's what's happening in Bend. And then, one moment while I pull this up from Redmond, which is always an active group. And so what has the Redmond HLC been up to? They hired a consultant to do some re-survey work, to re-survey 200 properties that were previously designated as undetermined, and I believe they're RLS. This means that the 289 properties with the undetermined status, which was from a 97, 1998 RLS, that are in the SHIPO database, now they all have a designation. So that's nice. And their HLC wants to provide targeted outreach to those property owners with EC status, informing them about the importance of historic preservation and the benefits to listing on the local register.
What kind of status was that?
EC, that stands for...
Is that current?
It's something contributing.
Okay.
I bet Commissioner Lekti can tell me. No pressure. No, okay, sorry. I should know this, but I just blanked out as well. But it's...
It's the air.
Yeah, I can look it up. But basically, they're going to be doing outreach to kind of let people know that, hey, this is a thing you could do, you could get on the local register. Their goal is to get more properties listed. And they're starting to talk about Preservation Month, and we'll get to that a little bit later ourselves in this meeting. And also, they are planning a history walk event in August. That is all the details I have on that, but that sounds like they're busy. So that's, those are the two updates from the Bend and the Redmond HLCs.
Thank you. That was the action item number one. And now we'll move to action item number two, the Certified Local Government Grant Discussion. And as you all probably read in the January minutes, the decisions that we make and that staff makes this evening will be presented to the county commission no later than the 24th of February, 2024. Not that we need to be involved, but just to let you all know that that's what's happening. And now I'll turn it back over to Tanya.
Thank you. Commissioner Lekti, were you about to say something?
Yes, EC means eligible contributing.
Okay.
Meaning they're not designated, but they're eligible.
Right, okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Sure.
That's a lot of properties.
Yes.
That's interesting. Yeah, okay. So on to the CLG grant discussion. I've summarized it all in the memo. I'll just give a brief overview. As the Chair stated, the applications are due to the state on February 24th. That is something that I will take care of. So we discussed this, the HLC discussed it last month at our meeting, and then staff requested additional input to kind of try to finesse these things and get a little bit more specific and get a sense of priorities. And several of you did that and I appreciate that. And so this is just an outline of kind of where we think we've landed. So I'll start with Sisters. As you know, Sisters had a pretty big list. When I went back to them, they kind of admitted, not admitted, but acknowledged that they have some pretty severe staffing limitations, so they really don't want to bite off more than they can chew, which I think is completely reasonable. So they decided to just kind of elevate this one single project, the Downtown Building Hardening Program. So that's kind of a wildfire mitigation design guidelines, as it were. So that would be a consultant and they would, you know, figure out a building materials list and I think probably go a little bit beyond that. And they estimate that that would be about $5,000. We think that there would also be some staff time involved, but that's kind of not of great importance right now, but just...
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the buildings are getting the hardening, right?
Yes.
And so that helps the wildlife?
Wildfire.
I keep thinking it's wildlife because I'm the naturalist part of me. I was trying, keep putting it together, trying to figure out, why will the deer benefit if there's new walls in Sisters? Okay, thank you very much. I understand.
Yes, no, but trust me, as someone who's working on both wildfire and wildlife, I do it all the time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, so it's a suggestion of materials, so I suppose that it would be things like, if you want to repair this because it's deteriorating, these are the, you know, historically accurate, yet also more wildfire-resistant materials to use in strategies, which we all know wildfire is a huge, huge issue, so I think this is an interesting project. Not exactly sure what shape it'll take, but, you know, Sisters seemed interested in it. And I think, you know, there was also discussion of the county kind of embarking on some sort of related thing. I think probably the best bet is to see what shakes out from a Sisters project and then see what could be potentially adaptable on the county level. There's no sense in kind of duplicating this work, duplicating it twice, as it were. So I think staff's recommendation is to let kind of Sisters go ahead with that and manage that consultant and go see where that lands. So they, as I said, estimated about $5,000 for that. And then on to the Deschutes County projects. There's a lot of suggestions, fairly general suggestions. Public education, as we've discussed, you know, all the time throughout all of our planning processes here, is really important. Preservation Month also really important, and we will speak more about that a little bit later, as well as trainings. You know, there's only, you know, as far as those categories go, it's staff's position that some of that is kind of applicable to grant-funded things, you know, tangible, here, we're going to cut you a check for this activity. Some of it isn't really grant stuff, in our opinion. I think some of it is natural things that the commission would do, kind of collaboration and communication with other groups that might not necessarily fall into the grant itself. And that is kind of where we landed with the potential grant tasks that we would actually put in the application. We don't, you know, there's general support for Preservation Month and education as stated, but we don't, in the absence of knowing those specifics, to say, you know, this would cost $522, we're going to kind of step back from that for now and just try to pursue those things perhaps outside of the grant. And really stick to stuff that's very tangible, very, things that we can get our arms around and put a dollar amount to for the grant. So with that, and does that make sense to you all? It's, you know, it's a little bit tricky. A lot of the grant eligibility categories are things that this commission generally doesn't do a ton of, the ILSs, the RLSs, you know, the really kind of hands-on stuff. Our stuff tends to be more the public education and outreach and the more general other category, which is a little bit trickier to kind of funnel into a grant process. I will note that recently, a commissioner from the Redmond HLC reached out to us at the county to discuss Dial, which is our online property system. And I believe it was in our January meeting here that there was also discussion of Dial and kind of what could be put in there to show historic resources. I think there was discussion of putting a little more Goal 5 information. This request from the City of Redmond didn't quite rise to that level, but they suggested looking at Dial and seeing if they could, just a simple designation note saying, hey, this property is in a historic district in the City of Redmond. They have one, one historic district, and that's not in there right now in Dial. So it seems like a relatively small thing, but I think their position was that it could be helpful to people looking at property or just doing that first kind of dive into the circumstances surrounding different properties, the same way you'd look at a zoning designation or you might look at zoning. So this could be a potential project that is done by county staff. The Dial system is administered by our county IT, so not me. I don't know how to do that, but we do have people who do manage that system. So that was a suggestive project, to kind of freshen up Dial, see what would be reasonable to add in terms of historic designation. It might literally just be a line on that first opening page about the property. It's not going to be the whole Goal 5 description because that's not really the appropriate place for it, but it'll be something. And that does involve a little bit of staff time. So we thought that we would kind of toss that into the mix because that could be a helpful, helpful project, even if it's relatively minor. So that didn't come up last time, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. The timing was kind of great that this person from Redmond reached out right about now. So I provided in the memo a summary of what staff is thinking of putting in the CLG grant application. The actual exact dollars, I will work out in terms of kind of what's a match, what's not a match, but in essence, we anticipate a total grant request of between $5,000 and $7,000. Because, and I know that this is not the, you know, there is more grant money available, but in the absence of specific tangible projects, it seems prudent to just pursue what we know that we can do, what we know is tangible, and go from there. And I don't, I think there's plenty that can be done outside of the grant, and I think we already do that, but we could do more of it. And I'm happy to discuss this at any level. But in essence, the Sisters Building Hardening Program would be the big chunk of the direct funding, about $5,000. We want to do a mailer and we would, Commissioner Lekti brought up, you know, we have to be very careful in what messaging we want to do on that mailing, kind of what to say, what not to say in terms of property owners. We want to make sure it's not perceived as an inefficient use of tax dollars of, and I think that's a really good point. So that's, you know, it's a very small cost, but we can kind of work that out later, but a mailer seems like a great idea. The update to the Dial web platform, as I just mentioned, that's staff time as well. Grant administration, which is just sort of admin stuff that we do on our end for accounting. Review and compliance, and that can be kind of a miscellaneous HLC administration. It's just staff time. It's essentially myself and perhaps Peter or other staff members. If we wanted to do any conversations, for instance, with the Archaeological Society, who came in on the meeting that the audio didn't work in, just the coordination of that could potentially be some staff time, but it's not necessarily, it's not a direct fee for them to speak or anything like that, but just those kind of collaborative things. Maybe some sort of open house or meeting where we, on that mailer, maybe we say, hey, come in, ask any questions that you have of the HLC, just that kind of thing. Preservation Month, we don't really know what that would be. I just put a placeholder in of about 500 bucks and, you know, we'll see where that lands. We do need to be a little bit more specific than just Preservation Month in the applications, but staff can manage that. If there is something to put in there, we will put it in. If there isn't, then we'll just clear that. And then lastly, just, Curry suggested this and Commissioner Lekti noted, potential membership for the group to the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. You know, this manages historic preservation commissions across the country. They have a big, you know, big conference every year, but this, just this $150 gives you all access to their resources. I think they have webinars, they have just educational things on their website. It's pretty comprehensive and a relatively low cost, and that's kind of a do-it-yourself training situation. So, you know, why not? It could be helpful. So that's a general list of what staff is recommending for the CLG grant. And happy to discuss any of this, none of it, or anything like that. Again, don't worry about the math necessarily. We can take care of that on the staff side because that can be a bit of a conundrum sometimes to get them all to line up. And then, as the Chair noted, we do have to go, staff has to go before the Board of County Commissioners to essentially get them to bless this. They just, we are essentially asking permission to apply for the grant, so it'll be a fairly simple presentation for them from myself, and usually it's just a kind of a courtesy. And so I'll do that sometime before the grant application deadline on February 24th. And I was just talking for a very long time, so I'll pause.
Woo, she did a really good job on that and I thank you very much. And in the interim, I'm glad I have lots of room up here because I have lots, I have four things that I want to say, okay? And I wanted to just kind of go in the order of the way the projects are listed on that, page two of four where it says project, and see if my questions will correlate to some of these. The first one that I just wanted to make a comment on the Sisters Building Hardening Program. I absolutely think it's a great idea to have wildfire mitigation, but I just want to do note that we have given lots of money to Sisters and I do hope that in the future we can kind of look at South County, East County, and even North County, just a note on that somewhere, so in the future, we'll think about that. All right, the second thing that I wanted to say was about the mailer. And I was wondering, perhaps if we do send it out, I don't want to over-flood May Preservation Month, but that might be a target, but I'm a little, I know we're going to send it to property owners, but I don't know what the content is going to be. So do we know the content?
I mean, I think the general idea was to reach out to, you know, as you said, property owners who have a designated property to say, hey, do you know that you have a designated property, that this is a thing? And then, this is up to the HLC, you know, do they want to ask any questions about what it means or do we want to...
Well, if we do get something organized for May, then if we could send the mailer perhaps in April, you could have on the mailer say, and by the way, at the kickoff on May 1st at the old post office downtown, there will be a mini workshop at 7:30, come have a snack and let us see your shining faces or something.
Absolutely. And I will note that, you know, this is a long grant period. It goes, it encompasses...
Right. It's 13 months.
17 months.
17.
So it goes from, we would get the notice to proceed or whatever they call it in April. So the timing might be a little tight for us to actually...
Right, right, right.
This month, or this year, excuse me, but it goes all the way till August of 2024.
Okay, and I'm sure that this year for the Preservation Month will just be kind of toast up in the water after COVID because we're running a little late, but we'll get to that.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that we can see what comes out of the Preservation Month discussion, so maybe that could be...
Right, absolutely.
...into a mailer. But we can be flexible on that for sure.
Okay, my third question is on the review and compliance section there about, you know, the coordination with the Archaeological Society. And I was thinking about Commissioner Ellingson's ideas that were so fabulous but weren't really supplied by the grant. And I would just like to suggest that I personally am going to start looking at other grants and funding streams for projects on the SHIPO site, and that's not really a question. That was the third comment. But the fourth comment is if we could compile some kind of list of, you know, I'm sure we're able to do this, but it is nice sometimes to have a list of, oh, these are grants that are coming, or here's a workshop that's coming, or here's news for you, or if somebody would help be the clearinghouse of that, and I can help do that too. So that is my fourth comment. Are there any other comments from any other people? Oh, Commissioner Schmidling is here. I must have, I must have answered all your questions. Are there any other comments about the grant? Does everybody, do I need to approve it?
Um...
Or are we good? Well, I don't know what the protocol is.
It doesn't necessarily need a formal vote.
Okay.
But I think if there's just general agreement that that's the direction...
Okay.
That's okay, then...
So I'll just open this up one more time here before we close this part and see if anybody has any questions or agrees with it or disagrees or has a comment. And I want to thank Tanya for working so hard on this. Any comments? Everyone's okay with this outline?
Sharon.
Hi, Sharon.
Yeah, sorry, I had to put the dog out.
Who put the dog out?
Yeah, yeah, she was... Anyway, Tanya, do you know, can we just have like a general line item that says like marketing and outreach?
I can try, but not really. They kind of want more specifics, you know, and therein lies the problem. I think they want a little bit more, you know, we will do a mailer or we will do a website or that type of thing. It doesn't, you know, there needs to be some level of specificity. It doesn't need to... It doesn't need to really drill down a lot, but it needs to be something more than just general outreach. And that's kind of the puzzle of where we've, where we've landed.
Because I hate to see us not take advantage of the full grant.
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
Yeah.
A lot of it is, is also tricky because some of those activities, even if, even if we did have specifics, some of that is just staff time, you know, and so there needs to be a directly reimbursable part. Obviously, things like printing, mailing, excuse me, those are directly reimbursable, but, you know, it's not to say that we can't use staff time for other outreach in general. You know, if we want to update our website, we can update our website, you know, as long as that fits in with kind of staff capacity. So I think it's not necessarily shutting that door, if that makes sense.
Yeah, how much, I can't remember. I don't have my notebook in front of me. How much are the grants normally? Aren't they closer to 10?
They were this year, they were about 13, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just wondering if any of the funds, you know, that we could throw in a line item for maybe that we outsource and contract and have somebody develop messaging for us for the year. And then, you know, some of that would be inclined on how it got distributed. But for '24, I mean, for next year, you know, and then Preservation Month can tie into that, open houses, communication with the landowners. I don't know, I'm just throwing out an idea.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I'm just processing. Anyone else? Commissioner Ellington or Schmidling? I'm not putting pressure on anyone. Because if nobody else has anything to say, then we can move forward. It looks like even though we have this summary of projects and, and a plan that we want to work, there's still a little bit of give room-
Yeah.
-in the plan.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit elastic.
It is elastic.
Okay.
Sure, and I think that a lot of the things that Commissioner Electe brought up, I think I can try to structure our, our request that it, yeah, it's elastic enough that it might be able to include some of that, maybe not hiring someone for that necessarily because I'm not sure who that would be. Is that like a, I mean, we have a kind of-
Communication consultant?
We have a media, you know, we have a media team here at the county, but they just kind of output what, what staff generates for them. You know, they're, they're the mechanism to get it out. But we internally usually develop that material, you know, whether it's a press release or a-
Are you talking like Twitter and, and media, social media things and getting on there and working on Dial and those, those things?
They, they do press releases and things.
What I'm getting at is the messaging, you know. None of us are communication, you know, gurus, 40 years old, that, you know, are trending, right? We don't, we don't, you know, we need to speak the right language and there's all this stuff going on that I see all the time with my clients that outsource to this stuff, and it's brilliant work and it catches people and they're engaged. I, you know, our press releases do not engage people. That's old school, you know, I mean, things like that.
Yeah.
I don't mean nothing kindly, but we're not reaching out to the next generation.
Well, yeah.
So we need a PR campaign, is basically-
Yes, that's an excellent point and-
Hey, marketing branding, yeah. And you could do a lot with $2,000, $5,000, you know, I'll get you somewhere between 20 and 50 hours or 40 hours. They go for about 100 an hour, yeah.
Wow, we could do some kind of a video where we're all having a dance. I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
That's a whole, that's another idea. The whole, you know, the little two-minute YouTubers.
Exactly.
They're everywhere.
Does anyone else have any comments? Sounds to me like that looks pretty good then, so we move forward to the next item.
Yeah, I mean, I want to keep thinking about what, what Commissioner Electe just said, but maybe I'll kind of toss that around in my, my own brain over the next week or two and see if anything emerges. And then if, if something comes out, sounds like a strange process, but then I can kind of email the group if there's any light bulbs in that direction and just get your approval or blessing. And if not, we would just carry on with, with this for now.
I want to, just want to say that I really appreciate people's ability to look forward and to be forward-thinking and to think about the world changing and how things go. And I think that's what I probably enjoy the most when you're working on history, but you also have to really be looking in the future at the same time. And so I, I really appreciate that and I enjoy working with you all in that capacity. So now we'll move on to the third action item, which is the Preservation Month discussion. And I just wanted to start that by saying that Tanya and I have tried to initiate this process since about November, but I think post-COVID, it's been a little difficult to get back in the swing and things have changed and the town have changed and the county's changed. But Kelly Cannon-Miller, and I'm sure some of you might have already gotten the email, there is a Zoom meeting at noon on Wednesday hosted by her and all of the stakeholders, I believe is the term, will be there. And this evening before our meeting here at the county building, I talked to Tanya because she's never been here during a time when we did that. And I told her just to have faith and we'll have this community building and, and a meeting and it's old bend. I'm not, I'm not talking about the religious faith, but I'm just talking about the, the faith in the way that people come together and something will happen. I do note that May is coming right up, and if you have anything that you want me to give to the meeting on Wednesday, please let me know. I personally do not know, this is one of my next questions, what the national theme for Historic Preservation Month is. I just never looked. So with that, I will pass the ball to anybody that has anything to say, and we'll go from We are a chatty group this evening, let me just say. Okay, well, I'll go to my, my final comment and then we'll move forward. Do you all know if the other commissions in Redmond and Bend have quarterly meetings the way we do at similar times?
I think that Redmond and Bend might meet more often.
Okay.
Because they're doing more review of applications, so it's more timely. The cities just have a different agenda, basically.
One thing I would like to suggest is somehow, if it's not going to happen in May, if we could all get the commissioners together, but you'd have to have it as a public meeting, and I don't know how you juggle that. And if not, could we all have a quarterly meeting together at some point or somehow? Because I know we've talked about it for a long, long time, and I don't, I just don't know how to play that tune, you know? So that's just something I'd like to put out there, and if it happens during May, that's great, and if it has to be tagged onto a field trip or something, we can do that as Is that okay with everybody? You all have infinite trust in me. Is there anything you all want to see happen during Historic Preservation Month that we have done before or, or something that you're thinking you would like to do differently? I do want to note that the Archaeology Roadshow is on the 27th of May, which is a Saturday, and that is at the Historical Museum downtown. And the first Monday in May is May 1st, and that's our next meeting. So I don't know what else will happen, but if you're willing to, if you want to just send an email to Tanya, because if we start emailing each other, then it becomes a quorum. But if you could send Tanya an email, if you're thinking about this so heavily after the meeting that you need to respond, you can send Tanya an email and she can forward it to me and we can move ahead with, we don't know where the kickoff will be or anything, but once we get any information, I'll pass that on to you. Are there any other comments about, I feel like now I've talked a lot, Preservation Month discussion? Tanya, do you have an, oh?
I would say keep it simple.
Yes, I think this year, keep it simple.
We've had some amazing events, but you know what, frankly, if you only had two or three, that's more than enough.
And Sharon, that's interesting because the list that I have made was just like, you do the kickoff, you do the Archaeology Roadshow, and then maybe we do one more thing, like the Tethro Pioneer Day or a walk-through Camp Polk or just, you know, something. And so maybe the whole month has four events and that's just fine and get everybody back on the path to, you know, reuniting. I agree. Thank you. Tanya, do you have anything?
Um, not related to Preservation Month, but-
Okay. Well, we're finishing now. Agenda item number four, which was the action items, number one, two, and three. And now we are at Landmarks Commission and Staff Comments. And the first comment I would like to make is, as I said before, the next meeting, Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 5:30 PM. And I think Tanya has something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring a, an item to everyone's attention. I was contacted by, I don't know if any of you know Bob Wrangely? He, he's been working on behalf of Camp Polk Cemetery. They've been trying to figure out the title ownership of it because, you know, it's been this weird mystery and they've been, you know, doing this incredible kind of hunt of documents and trying to just drill down. Anyway, they are, he is heading a group, they formed a nonprofit group to, called the Camp Polk Pioneer Cemetery Preservation Committee, and they're trying to figure out a way to get this, this ownership status changed. And apparently they have all the documents, they located whoever needed to be located, but it is a process and it costs, it involves a lawyer and time, surprise, surprise. And so they're working with an attorney and they reached out to the, to me to see if we could provide any financial assistance. And unfortunately, that's not in the purview of the HLC. CLG grant doesn't cover that kind of thing and we don't have a budget besides that. But I did offer, and he understands that, but he just asked me kind of respectfully to kind of amplify his message. So if anybody is interested, not necessarily individuals of, of providing donations, but you could do that as well, but, or just getting involved in this process, I can connect you to him and his group. Excuse me, apparently the process of getting all of the permits and documents and filing fees and all of that is about $10,000 and about nine months, and they've collected about $1,200 in donations. So they're a little short right now. And he was saying the problem is that many foundations would consider our grant requests, but we have a temporary abandoned cemetery caretaker status and they require permanent cemetery ownership. They are working with Currie Gill at the state with some of their cemetery grant stuff, so he's in the loop with her. But I just wanted to kind of throw this out there if anybody is looking for a project or, you know, wants to help with the either just time or resources or if they're-
Do you know if Jan Hodges is working on that?
He was on this email that-
Okay, I thought so because she was kind of a spearhead behind that because it was her relatives that are buried there.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was always distressing to her that anybody could bury themselves there.
Yeah.
So if you guys already have a place picked out, you better go claim it before they turn it into Pioneer Cemetery. But I can remember leading tours at Camp Polk and we'd come back the next year and someone who had been on the tour hadn't used yellow tape and made themselves a plot. So I get it.
Kelly, was that yours I saw staked out there?
No, but I did buy it, my husband and I did buy a stone for the, the guy that was cowboy horse kicked, and, and nobody knew who he was, and his, his marker was falling apart, so we got him a new stone. That's a good story. Maybe we should just have another Camp Polk tour, I don't know.
That might help bring attention for fundraising for the title. I mean, if you want to go that direction, it-
Uh, I'm good. Okay.
But if anybody's interested in-
Yes.
-working with this gentleman, Bob, please feel free to reach out to me and I can connect you.
Are there any other Historic Landmarks Commissioners and Staff comments this evening? Wow, this was a good, quickie meeting here, huh? All right, just to reiterate, our next meeting is Monday, May 1st, 2023, Monday at 5:30 PM. I'm sorry, I, my brain went dead at the beginning of the meeting and I'm all here now. Anything else for the good of the group? There's a gavel here, so I'm going to adjourn. Good night. Thank you.